So, a total of sixty-six valid ballots, therefore necessary to bail would be thirty-four. The Select Board received twenty-five votes, Brian Carrera received forty-one votes. Brian is elected to the position of... And we're determined it expires twenty-two-six. Article number three, the Seaford Town vote to approve ten thousand dollars to be spent from surplus to pay for the twenty-twenty-five annual audit. Is there a motion regarding to Article twenty-five?
I made a motion to be seconded, red.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve Article twenty-five. Is there discussion of the article? Does the Board care to comment? They have commented on the back of the warrant. That says that the audit line was left out in the annual town meeting budget voted last on in March in Yarra. Audit has been completed, we need to pay the audit. You don't all have a copy of the warrant with you, but that's the comment the Board apparently had on the subject. It was written down. Is there discussion?
The work's already been done?
The answer is yes.
And results can be shared, but with everybody?
The results of the audit are public, is it?
Where would we find those results?
For the twenty-twenty-five audit, the results have not been done.
Okay, so we just told Charlie that the audit was completed?
It is.
That we should have results.
No, not today.
Twenty-four. What about twenty-three? We find twenty-three?
Well, let's have a discussion more pointed towards the front here between two people. I think you're trying to answer the question about the audit is done but not back, is that the point?
Correct. The latest audit that has been completed for the last fiscal year that we had, has the work has been completed, the report has not been submitted yet.
Submitted to the Board.
Wait, is the last year that we have the results that could be shared?
What we call fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And I say what we say because the auditor calls it something different, so.
Where are those results found, these years?
They are in the town office.
Okay, so anybody can come in and ask for a copy of them?
Yeah, I believe just give a holler and some time to somebody to photocopy it in order for me to see that.
Any other questions regarding to the article? The motion? Say none. The motion before the body, Seaford Town vote to approve ten thousand dollars spent from surplus to pay for the twenty-twenty-five annual audit. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hands. Downhands those opposed. Article three passes. Article four, Seaford Town will vote to change the election process of municipal officers from open nomination to secret ballot. Is there a motion regarding to the article?
I made a motion to be seconded, red.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, it's removed and seconded to place the article before the body for discussion purposes. Article four. Is there a comment from the makers of the article?
I think you would be down to explain this better than I can.
Yeah, so, I mean, all of you who saw the warrant originally saw the explanation page that goes along with it, so I'm just going to kind of reiterate the reason for this potential change, if it were to be adopted, is basically so that it opens it up to the full town for voting. There are a lot of folks who work on Saturdays, have family obligations, can't always attend a town meeting. So just like any state or federal election, this would allow us to hold actual polling hours where everybody could come in and vote. It would also offer a thirty-day absentee voting for folks. So that way, everybody gets to have a say in who is helping to run their town, you know, which is important to a lot of people. And again, not everybody can always make the meetings. So this just kind of opens it up for them. This is something also that over the last few years, we've received a lot of feedback about people wanting to get to know the candidates. Instead of with on-the-floor nominations, you know, someone's name gets spoken, like today, we had someone ask Brian to stand up and kind of introduce himself because they weren't familiar with him. So especially nowadays where we have a lot of new residents in town, more people don't know everybody in town. So when someone gets nominated on the floor and they have to make a decision between these two, five, however many candidates, within a matter of three minutes, it can feel a little stressful, and they don't feel educated on it, which is why we started a candidate's night this year with doing this. People would file nomination papers if they want to be known that they're running, and we can, and with it, they can post or provide us with like a brief paragraph about themselves to inform residents and voters, excuse me, voters, you know, on why they're interested in running it, just a little bit about themselves, and gives people a chance to really kind of think about who they would like, compare them, maybe do their own get-to-know-you kind of thing with the candidates. So it opens up a lot of things. It's something that a lot of towns have moved to. It also helps on Town Meeting Day with making sure that, you know, people can focus on the actual budget items and really, you know, if they want to really go through line by line, because as we all know, sometimes town meetings can run quite lengthy and by the end of it, we're all kind of tired, and we're just like, let's go. So I think, you know, so that's part of why a lot of towns have moved to that as well, just so that it opens it for all voters in the town and so that it helps let Town Meeting Day be just about the actual budget.
Is there any, is there any discussion of the article number four?
So, so we...
Speak up so everybody can hear.
So if, so if we vote no, we're saying, no, we don't want what you just described?
Correct.
And if we vote yes, yes, we want what you just described, which is a more spread-out voting process and more familiarity with the candidate's process, yes on that or no on that?
Correct. If we vote no, then it would remain the open floor nominations like we currently have for an open meeting. This would actually change us to what's called a bifurcated meeting, because we would have technically two days of town meeting. We would have the polling day, and then we would have the actual meeting where everybody comes to vote on the additional articles.
I saw your hand next, and then we'll come here.
How much is it going to cost a town?
Speak up.
How much is it going to cost? Because you have to print the ballots and everything, you've got to send everything out, correct? Absentee, you've got to mail them. How much is it going to cost a town?
Well, we would only send an absentee if somebody requested it. It's, I mean, I don't think the cost would be much.
So printing ballots and all that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we would look at, you know, printing probably four hundred ballots, but I, I mean, we'd probably be looking at maybe twenty dollars in cost, I would guess. It wouldn't be significant.
And would both leave ballot clerks?
Well, ballot clerks would be coming, well, yeah, it's true. The day of voting, we would have ballot clerks on hand, yes, that we would be paying. So I, I don't have that figure offhand, I apologize.
So there's a cost attributed to a yes and a free here when it's a no?
The cost attributed to no is our time and energy spent here in town that day.
So my, my observation of this occurring in another town is that there is, they at least, open an official town meeting on the day of the written ballot and elect a moderator for some reason.
They have to because it's a town meeting.
So they would, technically, a meeting is opened on the day of the written ballot, and then the only items handled are the people coming to vote, and then, in that case, it's like on a Friday, and then the next day, they reopen the meeting. In the case I was involved, if I had the moderator they had elected, then elected me. Four choices, right? And then they announced the results of the election, which, in that case, there were a lot of people who voted that day, the day before. I don't know what the sequence of days is, I guess, I don't even think it's necessarily prescribed. And they conducted their regular meeting, which included election of some officers, like fire chief or something. So I'm just, just repeating what happened at a place I saw at work, and I know some towns have done that. Other questions, I saw your hand next, and then we'll get to Kelly. Yes.
I, I think the process worked just fine every year that the town has handled it in the past, and the discussing all that at the town meeting and having people present at the town meeting is the right way to go, and this new stuff just introduces all kinds of stuff that nobody's familiar with, and I'm opposed.
Okay, you have further comment? Yes, please.
Yeah, to just speak to Craig a little bit about the money, I can give you a general idea, there will be at least four of us here, eight to ten hours will probably be open, I don't know if we'll do the full twelve at minimum wage. So if that, if that gives you, did everyone hear that? I'm sorry, I should speak up a little bit better, yes. That there would probably be four of us at the polls, four people at the polls, ballot clerks, whatever you want to call them. They, the polls will probably be open eight or ten hours, and everybody would get minimum wage. If that gives you a roundabout of how much labor that would be to answer Craig's question, I can't give you a specific, something may come up, we might be twelve people, or we might only be...
What is minimum wage?
What's that?
Yeah, what is minimum wage?
Um, fourteen, eighteen, I think, the last time I got...
Eighteen?
Fourteen, eighteen.
Fourteen.
I believe was the last time I, when I...
So that would be sixty dollars an hour for eight or ten hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Roughly.
Yep, I saw, okay, another question from there, answer.
Well, if we have a comment, I'm just saying what some people are thinking, and that is the process, what happens between one day and the next. It opens up a question of about a chairman, or what is the, what, I mean, what happens between now and then, who gets, what happens? It just opens, so, can you think of, I'm just gonna say it, put it out there.
I mean, I guess, not participating in the debate, but commentary is, I can see a concerted effort to bring more ballot counters in and that kind of thing happening, and, I mean, I think the town has, has the obligation to strive to make it perfectly clear that whatever the vote is, the vote is. And, you know, it's not inappropriate to raise the question because any public official needs to be challenged, but my observation is, there's a considerable effort to address that, but I think that's, that's point taken. Further comment?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead, I saw your...
Yeah, I just wanted to help clarify that question for you because that is a valid concern. I actually have spent the last two days in a very in-depth training in regards to elections and town meetings, because there have been a lot of state law changes and things like that. And this was a big topic, because a lot of the towns that we, that were in the training with me do this type of election, so I got a lot of feedback from other towns as to how it's handled. And it's very much like a state and federal election, so you have your regular polling hours, you come in, we have polling booths, just like you would for our November vote that we do, okay? And then at the end of the night, whatever time polling closes, because you have to be open for a minimum of four hours, you don't have to be open the full twelve like on a state and federal. But with it, at the end of the night, when you close the ballot box, just like a state and federal election, poll watchers are allowed to come and be present, all the voting results will be announced at that time and posted by email and Facebook, so that way, when you come to town meeting, most towns do it the following day, some towns do it like a week later, it all depends on the size of town, I think. But we, so that way, when people come to the meeting, they're aware of who has been elected to these new positions already. That clarifies it all.
Other comments? Okay, finish your question. Just second, just second. One at a time.
When I'm at the ballot box, we, like, party night, we're there.
So that's closed and the results are tabulated before that?
So all, yeah, all, so, yeah, everything would be counted right there at the polls, we would have the results, and then all of those ballots go into a sealed box, just like a state or federal election. It gets all taped up and everything, so that way, if somebody were to tamper with it, we could easily tell, and it gets locked in our ballroom.
Okay.
So, you're welcome.
I saw your hand next, and then we can tell the question, too.
Just quick to answer the minimum wage, as of January, it's fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
You had a question.
Yeah, how do you know who the candidates are going to be at the time they're going to elect them? Because we show up to the meeting, we don't know who's going to be the candidate and who's, what their qualifications are. I would like to see where they're putting on the town website, who the candidates are going to be, and who we can vote on.
This process is...
When you show up to the meeting, I may not even know these people.
Yeah.
Just quick, answer that question for you.
This year, we had to come, or you were allowed to come to a candidate's night, which was held the night before the election, and speak about yourself, and then that morning, before everyone voted on Saturday at the town meeting, you had that option again, so people could get to know you, and I'm assuming that would still be offered next year if this didn't go through.
You have your meetings once a week, right?
Yeah, but this was at the town meeting.
Okay, well, is there anything we can do to put the person who's interested in running for that position, the town meeting before, so we can figure out who these people are?
Yes, absolutely an option. Anyone can come and get on the agenda.
So, what are the, what are the hazards of having an open democratic process, is it's an open democratic process? And you don't restrict the right of anybody to run for anything.
Right.
And I'm guessing you may not know everybody on the ballot in state and federal elections either, maybe only met them once or something, I don't know. That's, that's the process. It usually behooves a candidate for office to make as many appearances as possible if they're interested in it. Not always, but usually. So, the concern is valid, frequently expressed, but I don't think you want to limit the ability of somebody to run for a position. Every guy listening, when they show up at candidate's night, I don't think you can limit it, just like you can't limit, you know, limit or eliminate write-in ballots. I mean, we can, you know, the request is an obvious one, is that, that you can write, you know, yourself or anybody else on the ballot, but, you know, there is the question of whether it's open form or written process, you know, there is the right to participate and a right to be a candidate.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify for you, Gary, so if this were to be adopted, what we're talking about here, people would have to file nomination papers a hundred, at minimum of a hundred days prior to actual town meeting, and then you have, and then, once they filed those nomination papers, we would then share, if they wanted to provide, you know, blurb about themselves and why they're interested in running, maybe a little history on any experience they may have and things like that, and that can be posted to our town website, we can send it out in email, on Facebook, to try and let people be aware, to help them make a decision. But again, I think regardless of how, whether this passes or not, we would continue to hold candidate's nights and things like that. This would just be another added feature for those who can't attend candidate's night or can't attend town meeting.
Further questions or comments? Yes, please.
The article says that there'll be a write-in slot as well for last-minute candidates.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't...
That's for anybody who did not get nomination papers in in time and has decided that they would like to run as well. They are absolutely still allowed to have write-ins. Yep.
So I gather the proposed rules would be if you wanted to be on the printed ballot, what if, you know, I don't...
But that's our limit, you're not going to hold that candidate to that hundred days or something, right?
So nomination papers have to be filed at least sixty days before the annual town meeting to be put on a ballot. So if somebody decided forty days before town meeting that, hey, you know what, I really want to run for this position, they can still do that, they just wouldn't be on our printed ballot, and we wouldn't necessarily have their information out for residents, because they are not a known candidate at that time, so they would kind of have to do their own campaigning to really spread the word if they were hoping to run.
Any other questions or comments?
That doesn't do it then, doesn't limit that person. If he didn't meet that sixty days, say he decided in thirty days he wanted to do it.
Yeah, he still can, he just wouldn't be on the printed ballot, that's all.
Question? Okay, yes.
I'm wondering if we could have a hybrid of this, like, to have the, what you're talking about, the getting to know the candidates, because at the annual meeting, you can nominate right there. So if you could meet them before and then, the ones that had signed up, and still, I like the annual meeting where you can come and do it like the old-fashioned way.
So the article before the body is to, is to change the election process, says from open nomination to secret ballot, which I think the intent is to, to go to voting the day before, which aren't exactly that, but that's, I think that's the intent of the Board in putting that concept in front of the body politic here. Further questions or comments? Go ahead.
So, two separate days, the vote doesn't get taken care of at the town meeting? So you have to go vote another whole day and then have a town meeting for the rest of it? I just want to clarify that area, right?
Yeah, so you would stop in, vote for whatever positions are on the ballot, and then the following day or week or whenever the meeting is, it would have to be within fourteen days of the polling day that we would have to have our annual town meeting, where we all come in and vote on the other items.
So we do two stops instead of one?
Further questions or comments? Yes.
I have a comment. So if we can't get everybody to town meeting on regular town meeting day, how are we going to get them here two days?
Okay, so again, further questions or comments? The option for a secret ballot in this vote is always available, so choose, yes, please.
No secret.
Go ahead.
To address your question, this includes the ability to do it for an absentee ballot, right?
Yes.
So if you could come to town meeting or you chose not to come to town meeting, you'd still have a vote. The only vote you wouldn't have is if a candidate came in late, as you discussed, and only, was only aware when town meeting happened, if there wasn't any candidate, but any known candidates would be on the ballot, so you don't have to come to town meeting without particular purpose. I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, that's the kitchen side issue as well.
Yes.
Yes, I see your hand way back.
So I'm just concerned that after tea ballot, you all counted and four on the same day as voting day?
Correct.
So that means any after tea ballots that come in after, which are counted?
That is correct, just like a regular state federal election.
In May?
Yes, sorry.
Other questions or comments? Yes, please.
What is your secret ballot process?
That's what they're describing here versus what you occur now.
I mean, who gets to select the person if it's a secret ballot?
Well, I think it's a term used to describe what she has outlined, is that there's a nomination process where you, you submit your name on a petition, and the town sees that and prints it on a ballot, and then you come and vote on a day other than town meeting day. That's, that's what the intent of these words are, I think, versus this process.
So, so just to clarify, so what we do at our annual town meeting, and even earlier for road commissioner, what we did is actually called a written ballot, which is separate from a secret ballot. A secret ballot is what you cast, where you receive an actual ballot with names and checkoffs and write-in sections versus a little slip of paper that you just write one name on. So the secret ballot for that process, you would come in like you do on a regular election, you state your name, you receive your ballot, you go to a voting booth where no one else is next to you that could potentially be looking over and seeing, like up here, with a written ballot, if there was a group of people up there, or sometimes people just write it on their hand while they're talking to somebody, things like that, we've seen in the past, so anybody could see, whereas this would keep it more private, like we do during our, like, normal November election, if that makes more sense.
Further questions or comments?
Does the motion discussion cease?
The move has, the motion has been made and seconded to cease discussion. On that issue of closing discussion, please raise your hands if you're in favor of that motion. Downhands opposed. So that motion does pass, we'll proceed directly to vote. Unless there's a request for a written ballot, we will vote by show of hands. I see no request, all those in favor of the motion in front of you on Article number four, and the motion is in the affirmative. If you vote yes, you're favorite, in favor of this article; if you vote no, you're opposed. All with a yes vote, please raise your hands. Leave them in place, please, until counting, and it will take a minute, so please be patient.
They want a secret ballot.
Just a second, discussion's over, we're just, we're voting at this point. A total of sixty-one votes were cast, necessary to prevail would have been thirty-two, thirty-one actually, but the vote actually wasn't close, it was forty for yes and twenty-one for no. So the article does pass. Article five, the super vote, change all municipal official positions excluding select board to appointed positions versus elected. Is there a motion in regard to Article five?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that. Can I do that?
It needs to be on the floor, at least, and I don't, I think you get into some quasi-challenges if you amend, I don't know, we need to, we need to have the item on the floor to even discuss that. Is there a motion on the act?
So that's what I'm asking, I'd like to...
You can't amend something that isn't before you. It technically isn't before you until somebody makes a motion on what's printed. Yes, please.
Can I make a motion to discuss it? Would that allow an amendment?
You need to move to either accept or reject, which I think you're trying to do.
Okay, then I make a motion to move to accept, I guess.
Is there a second to that? Okay, it's in front of you. Now, I did see your hand, yes.
So what I'd like to do is, since we see the town would like to change all municipal office positions excluding select board, I'd like to add to that to exclude fire chief, EMA director, road commissioner, planning board, and school board.
I'm sorry, do you repeat that list one more time?
Sure. Fire chief.
Okay.
EMA director. Road commissioner.
Okay.
Planning board. And school board.
Okay. And just so you're aware, school board actually has to remain elected regardless. But, that's...
The two are on that.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Okay, so there is an amendment offered to the article. Is there a second to the amendment?
What was the amendment?
Second.
What was the amendment?
Okay, I'll repeat it loudly. So the, the amendment to the article, the article is moved to be accepted, the amendment that has been moved and seconded is to change all municipal official positions excluding select board, which is already there, to have also in that line, fire chief, EMA director, road commissioner, planning board members, and school board was the motion.
Correct.
Did I accurately repeat the motion?
Is that to exclude?
Exclude, that's correct. From being appointed. So the question in front of you is, do you pick or the board pick? I think, boiled down.
So, do you want us to kind of clarify this a little bit?
Uh, I think lots of people may have comments, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
So basically, Bob, you're asking basically for the treasurer to go to appointed, and that's the only other position that would be appointed, right?
No, and tax collector, too.
Oh, we have excise tax over here, but, yeah, so tax collector and treasurer would be moved over to the appointed positions. So this is something that we've all kind of learned through MMA and their legal process that most other towns have... that most other towns have these as appointed positions. And the reason for that is technically they can be treated more like an employee during that year while their term would be up, let's say, March to March. If you have, the EMA director is not doing his job or her job. And they really have no consequences until they're elected again. And if they have forty friends who keep electing them every year, the turnover for people to say, hey, I have been an EMA director in the last place I lived, I have all these qualifications. They might not have the people to back them to be elected. If you switch this to an appointment, the select board looks at, what are your qualifications? Do you have a resume for this position? And then throughout their term, they are treated more like, okay, let's say you were written up because you were not doing your job, we've had multiple complaints, so on and so forth. Does that make sense so far, what I'm saying? So it's just changing it from, okay, you can keep re-electing someone or not electing someone that might have a lot of strengths in a certain position. Someone might keep getting elected that doesn't, or vice versa.
Further, further questions or comments? I saw your hand first and then back here.
I can also progress the opposite way. My thinking is, I like voting for my individual offices, I don't represent the unit of town. So that's, this is my rationale behind it. The other two, like the, like the, like the tax, you know, collector, treasurer, you know, those are pretty, you know, positions that take a while to get. I mean, so if you have somebody committed every year, that's somebody different, somebody different. That's probably hard on the town and on the select board. So I think it's a little bit easier, you know, if the select board, you know, just appointed those to the tax collector and treasurer. And yes, it can happen that way where, yeah, you might get somebody's buddies to commit and vote, but it can also happen the other way around too.
That's why I said, but yeah.
Instead of, I'm just curating, so that's why I'm going with that.
Further questions or comments? Yes.
These people that are gonna be selected for their jobs are gonna be residents of this town?
Technically, you don't have to be a resident. The only people that need to be residents of the town are the select board.
Okay, but why would you take that out of the hands of the people to vote on?
We're giving you that option right now.
But why would you want to have that in town?
Many other small towns, big towns have appointments for certain positions. Mostly tax and treasurer, but all of the other ones we have listed here with your amendment, we can either amend it and still continue to vote on it or scratch the whole thing. You guys still have the voice.
Further questions or comments?
My question is...
Hold on, finish.
I'll finish, okay. This has opened the entire town to nepotism, favoritism, whatever you want to call it. But it does, it takes the election process away from the people and gives it to a small select people who actually is a closed network. And I'm really not in favor of that.
Okay, that's, certainly welcome to have your opinion and certainly welcome to express it. Please go ahead.
To build on the gentleman's point, the transparency of the process of hiring is probably a concern to everyone. Is there, I mean, I appreciate the effort to codify these positions and to avoid the pitfalls of nepotism and cronyism by codifying them. Is there going to be any kind of transparency in the process of who is hired or appointed? Will we, will the town be able to see like, oh, we've got these? I mean, is that something that a citizen of the town could come to the select board meeting and hear a deliberation?
You could come to any select board meeting.
Right. But would those appointments and those considerations for hiring someone, would those, would that process of hiring be transparent so that anyone who wanted to could come to a select board meeting and hear the qualifications of the candidate be discussed by the select board?
Yes. We would still be discussing in an open meeting if we had ten resumes from residents that are like, oh, I want this job. Maybe we'll have no resumes. But that's kind of what it's asking you guys. Do you want to change it from how we do it now to us choosing based off of qualifications?
So, I don't want to get picky and I don't want to alter the important discussion. Technically, you're debating the amendment. The amendment is to add the list of excluded positions to an article that you will eventually vote on. Bring you, I don't know whether anybody wants to parse that anymore in terms of, you know, would you be in favor of excluding these individuals? I don't think, and I can avoid the greater discussion, but you will be voting at least twice on this article. Could be even more, I don't know. Go ahead, please.
So just for clarification, if people are appointed, there's a checks and balances with the select board, correct? Whereas if it were just voting, it would be kind of almost, I don't know. It could change every year, the possibility of there would be a lack of consistency? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. It's just every year when you elect certain positions.
Yeah.
It could change every year or it could stay the same. Even when you're electing it, you don't know. At that election, anyone could run for that position and it could turn over every year.
But if you're appointed, so that those individuals are held accountable to the select board to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I attempted to do this in the way, in the order which I saw hands, so go ahead. Behind her, yes, go ahead, yes.
So, I want to expand on what, sorry, on my name.
Helen.
Helen said is basically as it is right now, if you vote someone in and they don't do a very good job, you can't get rid of them until the next vote.
That's wrong.
There's no recall right now.
That's wrong.
We don't have it in their charge, you don't have a charter. But if you have an appointment and they're doing something wrong, they can be fired. And you can bring someone in that is not doing, that do, correct.
Okay, go ahead.
State statute says that that board right now is responsible for every position in town. And if there's something done wrong, it's up to them to do disciplinary action on all those positions. That state statute right now.
Yep. But also they have a term too.
That's right. But if it's due process, there's a way that that board can eliminate.
Would it have to be done legally, like?
It has to be done legally, right.
With lawyers?
Okay, right.
So they have to hire a lawyer?
You would have to.
Further comments? Yes, Kelly?
I just want to clarify that, yes, there would be ways that this select board could eventually fire an elected position. However, because we do not have a recall ordinance in our town, it would be extremely difficult and a very lengthy process and probably their election time would outrun the time before they actually could terminate the position.
Why would you take that process out of the hands of the people?
Okay, let's kind of keep going around, so firing somebody for cause would be different if you elected versus if the board was in control, you would not have to have cause to fire you?
As an appointed position, you still have cause.
Mr. Singh.
You have to have cause, but you still, you would be writing someone up, let's say like an employee, which you could do technically in an executive section now, but it is very lengthy as a process.
And it would be, yeah, okay, so you...
Further questions or comments? Yes, please.
Yes. I spoke to several clerks in several towns.
Speak up so people can hear.
I'm sorry, I spoke to several clerks from several towns that had the same process. And what was told to me several times is, it all depends on your faith in the select board. My problem is that right now, I feel there's a huge conflict of interest between a select board member and the town clerk, tax collector. Now, I've been told according to MMA rules, there is no conflict. However, we have to take this in consideration. And this is what kind of worries me. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Just to the point of clarification, MA Municipal is an advisory organization. I don't think they help towns interpret rules, they don't make rules. So, you know, they provide advice, hopefully it's correct. They certainly work with a lot of towns. Further comments or questions? Yes, please.
Okay, so to rewind and go back a bit and give you a little bit of where this is all coming from. I hope I'm speaking loud enough for everybody to hear. So, it started a while ago. Our auditor suggests that at least, and I will call them office positions, the ones that excise, clerk, treasurer, and real estate. I will call those office positions for the, for the purpose of this conversation, if that's okay. Those office positions, his recommendation is that they are appointed. Number one, they are apolitical, they affect no change. There's no budgets written, we don't ask, they don't ask for any money, there's no vote. They have zero power in the board. They are worker bees. They do their jobs, plus whatever your elected officials do to ask them to take care of. They do all of that. That, and once he recommended that, we, everybody, when we first met with it, everybody, the board, all of us, sat down and had the same concerns you did. Holy cow, we can't rely on them three to vote on the correct people. They're putting all the power in their hands, so we were like, whoa, that's not good. So, we started talking around, everybody, or I won't say everybody, there's been a push in town to get up to date, to get more technologically advanced, get more in line with more towns. So we had made those searches to other towns around. And I got an overwhelming response, the, of those office positions, the vast, vast majority of all the towns in MA, those office positions are appointed. The other ones, EMA, planning board, those here, there, and everywhere, some appointed, some were elected. But the reasons they said was for continuity in town. That you've got, because like it or not, they are, these positions are somewhat specialized. That, yep, someone can walk in and earn the job, but it is going to be very difficult without an amount of training for the municipal part of it. That, I don't know how else to say it other than that. So, like, so earlier in the spring, we had to vote in two selectmen. We were down to one select board member. And I know that probably the vast majority of you guys didn't feel it, but the town essentially shut down. We couldn't sign warrants, we couldn't pay bills, whole bunch of things that we couldn't do. We were days away from having to go to the legislature to get some sort of state waiver to be able to conduct business. And we can't, we can't plan for every single emergency, every single situation that would happen. But as these things come up, we talk to other towns and find out what they do to protect the town in other situations that are closer. So that's what we've been working to do. And this is certainly in line with that, that, that sort of why this has all come about was that it is for continuity, I mean, I can, this is a letter from, you know, that came from the email thread from the other municipalities in town, just why they did. But it just echoes continuity, the specialized training that these office positions need. And so forth like that, that, you know, we're not doing brain surgery. I'm not saying that, that we can't be replaced by any, any such thing imagination. But municipal work is different, the things that we have to do are different than business, a little bit different. Yep, if you know how to run cable, you can come and run cable, you know how to do that. But there are other things going on that these jobs are more of a job than just, oh, let's be selected for a while. And I'm not taking anything away from you guys, but that's more of a political position. Whereas ours is more of a job where we have training, we have classes, we have networks, we have organizations that we belong to and stuff like that. So that's sort of over the past, probably close to three years where this has come from, talking and us voicing the same opinions as you guys about taking it out, taking the power out. These positions are apolitical, we have zero power. We can't say, oh, here's our budget, we're gonna spend this money and can you do this? Can you, no, we're just there as worker bees, we're gonna do our jobs. So I don't know if that clarifies, and I know there is some concern that they would be picking our salaries as well, or any appointed positions, they would be picking their salaries. That's not true. The salary is always on the town report, the budget, that big long article that we vote on. Town officer salaries in the past have always been one thing that everybody votes on and we don't leave. Like on that first article, we sort of, road commissioner at this much. You know, going forward, we're gonna try to list all those out, so you can pick them apart one by one. No, I don't think the treasurer should make that much, no, real estate's making too little, we need to give that one. You guys will always have that final say, the board will recommend, but that vote on the money will always come from the body at town meeting. If that...
Just to clarify, so the tax collector stipend and all the others were in the warrant, itemized?
In that, itemized, the town officer salary, usually the last one and it's a group.
Okay, so it's not itemized, it's just a collective?
Right, but going forward, we plan on itemizing it. So everybody knows, whether this passes or not, we will try to make sure that that, so everybody knows. The select board makes this much, planning board makes this much, you know, have them all listed out.
I was just gonna try and clarify, so the way that, if you have a copy of last year's town warrant or when you go home, it is available on our website, you want to look at it. So, we always had it listed out because we're electing every single position. So it's always been listed out in one of the first articles, you know, the selected gets this much, tax collector gets this much, so on and so forth. Like my clerk and excise tax collector position has been an appointed position since Sandra's retirement because there's a mandatory six-month on-the-job training before I can process anything by myself. So Sandra didn't want the town to shut down for six months from registration. So they made it appointed. And even that salary is still voted on at town meeting. So it won't change. And the board already gets these recommendations from all the municipal officers. We go to the select board meetings prior to town meeting when they're discussing budget to say, you know what, I'm happy with where I still want to be, or, you know, I feel like I deserve a raise. Like last year when I took Sandra's position, I knew that I was gonna take a pay cut from what she had been receiving as tax collector. The select board knew that they wanted to receive a pay raise. So that was all factored into the actual line item budget. It's generally the very last one called town officer salaries. So all of those are figured into that as is. And what we will do, if this were to be adopted, since we wouldn't have necessarily this full section or if we go with the amendment, where we just wouldn't have certain positions there, then those certain positions would be included under the town officer's salary, also including positions like CEO and animal control officer, which are appointed by the board also. If that helps to clarify at all.
I saw your hand next to the little...
I think Ken was up first.
Oh, okay, sorry, they get ignored up here.
So basically, at this point, after what Kelly said, she's breaking it down a little bit more. You have people day to day who you guys deal with, all of us deal with in the office. So if what Bob said is right now he's trying to make an amendment, he doesn't want all of these positions to go to appointments. So the only two positions your amendment said would be treasurer and tax collector. Diane's already appointed, she's the tax collector, the excise tax. Well, excise tax, excuse me, she's multiple positions right now, but she's already appointed. So it would be appointing Kelly's position, treasurer, through Bob's amendment as only one position?
No, because we'll say two.
And real estate tax.
Because that position, real estate tax.
Which is currently?
No, I'm excise tax collector, there's two different tax collectors.
Who's currently collecting real estate?
I am, I was elected.
Okay. So those two positions would move to appointments via Bob's amendment. All the others would stay elected. So that's kind of where we're at now. Do you want those two positions to go to appointments? That's the amendment, so we can kind of move on from that.
Further questions or comments? I saw your hand next, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to cease...
I'm sorry, I recognize the speaker first, so...
A small clarification on the amended motion. Should that list also include the Board of Appeals?
I have to go back to the maker of the amendment here.
Say, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Should your amendment include the board of appeals?
Yes.
The intent of the amendment, you got to get, was to include board of appeals. Okay. Because at some point we will have to restate the amendment in its entirety for people to know what they're potentially voting on. I saw your hand next and then I'll recognize others, yes?
So Diane.
Speak up.
You said we vote for town offices at the bottom?
Yeah, I'm the four, town officer salaries.
Okay, who's the town offices?
There's this, I mean, it all depends on...
There's only three town offices in Waldo.
So you're going to tell me that the warrant that was written by the previous select board was to pay the select board seventy thousand?
I'm not going to tell you that, the law firm rule.
I agree that that wording should be changed.
That's right.
To town officials.
Right now, those three people got eighty-two thousand dollars.
I agree, it should be changed, yes.
We voted on it.
I mean, we don't.
Further questions or comments, I saw your hand?
Yeah, all this conversation is great, but the question is, do you want to take the voting process out of the hands of the people and give it to a board?
I think that's a fundamental question, yes. So, without further discussion, I will restate the amendment, as I understand it, it'll probably be corrected. The amendment to the motion, that's what's before you right now, the amendment is to add to the list of exclusions, fire chief, school board director, EMA director, road commissioner, planning board members, appeals board members. Is that the motion?
Correct.
Okay, and it's been duly made and seconded. Are we ready to vote on the amended? You're not telling the board, you're not telling the world how you feel about the motion itself. You just want to say, if it passes, it includes this exclusion. Are we all on the same page, understanding? I doubt that we're on the same page on approval or disapproval, yes?
So, so if we're vote, if we vote, so the vote is going to be on this amendment?
Correct.
And if we say yes, we're saying yes, exclude these positions and keep the whole election.
That is, what I hope I stated, yes.
And if no vote means...
They're not excluded, they are in the original motion as it's printed in the board. That's right. And then eventually you will vote on Article five, I hope. Are you, do you all understand what we're about to do? And you wish to do it by show of hands? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands, leave them in place until counted. Downhands, those opposed? Okay. And I used to state at this beginning, if you choose to challenge any of the voting, please do that. I took a little bit of a shortcut there, we could have done a count, but I think you're pretty much on one side, not a hundred percent. So that now brings us to an article that has been duly amended. Is there further discussion of the article as amended? You've gotten most of the opinions, I think, that could exist in the air. Are you ready to vote on the article as amended? You don't have to answer that, but I'm just going to, by the lack of show of hands, that we are ready. All those in favor of Article five as amended, please raise your hands and leave them in place until counted. Downhands, those opposed. Article five does pass as amended. The motion is adjourned, it's the order. All in favor of adjournment, please, raise your hands, shout whatever you choose. Thank you very much, meeting is adjourned.